Go back up later.
Let's, um, let's open with a prayer. Gracious Lord, we thank you for all the blessings that you've bestowed upon us in our lives. And from the biggest to the smallest, we now thank you for this opportunity to be together, study this scripture, and try and discern your will for our lives as we move forward in our journey of faith. It is in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right. So, our assignment was chapter four, verse thirty-five, which is right where we left off last time, and through chapter five, verse forty-three. Last night, when I was trying to tell these numbers to Christy, it dawned on me, it was four, three, and five, and then in a different order, and I don't think she could understand me very well when I was talking, so, but let's just jump right into it. We, we are looking at what, um, the, the writer of our book, Dr. Dibert, uh, Dibert, calls, uh, "The Jesus Ability to Calm." Now, that is easily portrayed for us in the first story. It might not be as easy for us to pick up in the ones that followed it, but he finds that as being the theme. Of course, the opening story, which is "The Calming of the Storm," is one of the most beloved, and indeed is the inspiration for the famous, uh, painting by Rembrandt of the storm on the Sea of Galilee. And, uh, if you've ever seen that, it is a very impressive painting. Mark makes it clear, this is just not another afternoon's squall on the Sea of Galilee, but a whirlwind from hell which might drown the church in a warrior abyss. And we'll come back to several of these points I'm making right at the beginning. "The disciples have heard their calling; now they must know that not even a, a, a influx of evil like this can prevent them from carrying out their mission." We have encountered lots of miracles up to this point, some exam, in the book of Mark. Some examples are the expulsion of an evil spirit, uh, in the first chapter, also the healing of leprosy, which would have been, um, a very significant miracle in front of people, the curing of paralysis in chapter two, the restoration of a malformed hand in chapter three. And all these things would make a huge impression on people, and all these things have been done in the presence of some, if not all, of the disciples. So, it's not like they should be, should be surprised by Ju- Jesus doing something, uh, very much out of the ordinary deed. They obviously have some idea about his, um, identity and, and the power that he wields, but this calming of the storm moves it into a whole new ballpark. Um, it, it, for the disciples at least, it makes the, the other miracles seem small, and I won't say insignificant, but certainly much smaller. And the author points out that with today's reading, uh, the miracles in general seem to take a, um, step forward. They, they become more significant, more, uh, powerful acts of, uh, pow, of, uh, Jesus. He converges the power of Jesus with his baptismal identity as the beloved Son of God. So, remember, that statement was made, uh, by the Spirit at his baptism, but it was for his understanding. Who Jesus, from this point on in Mark, who Jesus is, is intimately wrapped around what Jesus does. And if, if you, uh, if you, don't get anything outside of the day, just remember that. Who Je- in, from here on in Mark, who Jesus is, is wrapped around what Jesus does. "He tumbles, uh, together in the church's imagination, an incomparable witness that creates harbors, uh, that creation harbors no chaos, strong enough to overcome the reordering power of Creator. As it was in the beginning, is now for the church, and the formless void, and the formless void of our life, the watery madness and demonic engagement are to God simply clay of creation." He uses these instances to help continue to form the identity of Jesus in the minds of the disciples. Now, I know, other than the first story, that the three remaining portions do not necessarily deal with the disciples directly, but in the writing of Mark, you've got to remember, he's not just recording a history, he's not just giving us sayings of Jesus, he's not just making statements about, um, his doctrine of Jesus. You might not have even understand calling it that, but, uh, he is revealing the good news as it was revealed to the crowds, but in this instance, who is he revealing it to? Us. Any audience that reads this, this book, you are now a part of the scene. And, uh, so, in all of these stories, you can say that Jesus, I mean, that Mark is recording a witness about Jesus that is meant for us to get. Now, I'll probably say something that will get me in trouble. That's the difference between a biographer or historian and the writer of a gospel. The writer of the gospel has an intention to sway you. A historian simply records facts, one after the other, and, and they try to make it entertaining, but not at the expense of anything other than the absolute truth. I'm not saying Mark is enhancing things here. I'm just saying that Mark has a purpose other than compiling a bunch of facts. Likewise, a biographer, um, biographer does share with Mark the, the understanding that I'm, I'm revealing a person to you that I have an opinion about. Now, a lot of biographies are, um, positive. Some aren't. Some, you know, kind of look like they're saying, "Look what a terrible person this was." But, um, in this case, Mark, in, in recording a biography of Jesus, i- is, is trying to influence you to, uh, I don't want to say like him, but, um, have positive feelings about him. But where the biographer and the gospel writer differ is, for the gospel writer, um, th- there, there's a lot at stake, because, uh, like any good preacher, he's trying to win your soul. A biographer, you know, he, he hopes you'll understa- when he's writing positively, he hopes you'll understand the significance of this person, and, and maybe learn some things from this life, but he, he does, if he's writing about George Washington, I doubt he thinks that you, uh, buying into George Washington deeply is going to save your soul. So, um, subtle differences maybe, but important differences. Okay. Um, "With four magnificent acts of creation out of chaos," and we'll ta- tackle that statement right off the bat. "Mark delivers relief to the church, relief that restores our confidence as disciples." Okay, so let's go ahead and start. There are actually, um, four sections to this today, so I'm, I'm gonna need four different readers, and, uh, the first section is probably the shortest. It's "The Calming of the Storm." So, who'd be willing to read this for us? Verses, thank you, Ally. It's verses thirty-five through forty-one of chapter four. It's the end of chapter four.
That day, when the evening came, he said to his disciples, "Let us go over to the other side," leaving the crowd behind. They took him along, and just as he was in the boat, there was also other boats with him. A furious squall came up, and the waves broke over the boat so that it was nearly swamped. Jesus was in, in the stern, sleeping on a cushion. The disciples woke him up and said to him, "Teacher, don't you care if we drown?" He got up and moved, and he butted the wind and said to the waves, "Quiet, be still." Then the wind died down and completely calmed. He said to his disciples, "Why are you so afraid? Do you still have faith?" They were terrified and asked each other, "Who is this?" Even the wind and the waves said, "Oh."
Okay, thank you. So, the early church, of course, and, and certainly, uh, the, the writers of the gospel, had the same understanding of, of nature that, um, the, the Hebrews did. Water equals chaos. You can't seem to make it do what you want to do. You certainly can't contain it, and so, uh, with any time, uh, it, it certainly, for them, wasn't as pleasant and orderly as dry land. Uh, this probably should be expected from people who started out as shepherds and then became farmers. Um, so, water holds a certain trepidation for them. Uh, the ser- this Bible study series is kind of a further commentary on the interpretation commentary series, which was a, a very good set of, of commentaries that I did own until recently. Uh, and, uh, the writer of the commentary made this statement. "The still, stilling of the storm contain, it, uh, continues to reassure the church in every time of persecution and distress, that Jesus Christ is Lord. He is ruler of nature and history, and that his, uh, he is present with his disciples even in their anxiety." And so, you know, that, that's a very, that's a very quick explanation of, uh, that, uh, particular passage. But in order to really grasp the power of this story, it's important that we understand, well, he, he says, "First, you have to discard what you think about this story, and, and act like you hear it for the first time." You'll hear preachers say this sometimes when they're getting ready to preach, as they're reading their scripture, they'll say something like, "Let us hear this with new ears," or whatever. It's hard to do that. Uh, and, and the more time you've spent in scripture and study of scripture, the harder it is to do that. So, especially with a, a, uh, it's a very familiar story like this one. So, he says, "We need to remember, one, the storm, two, the sleep of Jesus, and three, his interaction with the disciples." So, uh, first of all, he wants to clarify the part about the storm. Now, when Ally was reading the passage just then, and I, wha- what translation do you have?
The New International Version.
Okay, United States. Uh, I believe that the translators rendered that as furious squall. That's not bad. Um, but you've heard it a million times, and it's, it's true in this instance. It loses something in the translation. Okay, so, in the book of Job, at two different points, uh, we are told that God responds to Job out of the whirlwind. What comes to your mind when you hear the whirlwind?
Tornado. Tornado?
Tornado, yeah. You know, there can be gentle ones, but, uh, a- and if it were over water, instead of tornado, we call it what?
Waterspout.
Waterspout. That's exactly right. Um, it is the Hebrew word that's translated as some form of savage cosmic tempest. So, it's not that little whirlwind you see that works its way through the playground in the middle of a summer day or something. This is more like a terrifying storm that seems beyond your capacity to imagine. Um, we had a lot of rain this weekend, you know, but it was nothing compared to Florence. All right, so think Florence, not what we had this weekend in terms of storm size. You know, it came, and stayed, and stayed. In this instance, this Greek word that is used in the Septuagint, which is what Jesus and the disciples would have been mo- more familiar with probably than Hebrew recitations of the scripture, um, uses that same word, and it also has an adjective. What are adjectives supposed to do?
Describe.
Describe. The adjective here in the Greek might be, best be translated by the word "mega." So, it is a mega whirlwind. Now, we know from our understa- uh, from Mark's recording of the calling of the first disciples, who were, who were some of the first disciples called?
Fishermen.
Yeah. You think they had not seen a storm before? But there's no differentiation that says, "Well, the old landlubbers were worried, but the four fishermen said, 'Oh, this is nothing.'" Everybody in the boat is terrorized, and it says they were on the verge of sinking. So, this is a concrete threat to Jesus and his disciples, and that, any questions there? So, don't think of this as just like an afternoon blow-up or something. This is, this is a storm that is so intense that to the minds, certainly of the disciples, it would have seemed to go beyond just a normal, really bad storm. It's, it's worse than that.
They're used to storms.
Yes, yes. It, it was bigger than anything they'd ever seen before. Okay. Secondly, uh, wha- what is Jesus doing during all of this? He's asleep. And, uh, this seems unimaginable to us, because, uh, we, we certainly know that we would be awake, and-
Well, if it was so bad, how could he just be resting? It seemed like it would be-
Where we're going right now. So, um, we, we, uh, have given two spins to that business of what, yeah, what's he doing asleep? Either he's so tired that he can't somehow go on, um, or we castigate Jesus for trying to make this some kind of test of faith for the disciples. And what, what, uh, the writer of our book is saying is, no, it's neither one of those. I just want to share with you what he says. "The only adequate explanation for Jesus' sleep is that he is utterly fearless over the prospect of dying." He is utterly fearless over the prospect of dying. You know, if we believe he knows what his future is, he knows when and where. This is not it. He can sleep at this moment because he suffers no anxiety over death. He can sleep in the back of a thrashing swamp, doomed fishing vessel, because he sleeps the sleep of a faithful Jew who entrusts his future entirely to the Lord of his past. And then they quote Psalm three. "I lie down and sleep; I wake again, for the Lord sustains me. I'm not afraid of ten thousands of people who have set themselves against me all around." How do soldiers sleep on a battlefield?
They don't sleep a whole lot.
They don't sleep a whole lot, but they can sleep. Now, the Psalmists' answer was, "I can sleep because I trust God." And that's what Dr. Dibert is saying is the answer to the question. He completely and fully trusts that God has the power to keep anything from happening. But eventually, he does. He's awakened by the disciples, and, and we're not real comfortable with the way that goes either. So, um, this killer storm that Jesus was sleeping through, the disciples weren't, and they're terrified. So, they wake him up, because they're, they know they are about to be drowned. He's, "Teacher, you are not concerned that we are being destroyed." He awakens and asserts his authority over chaos, and I love this explanation he goes on to give. Um, what was the exact wording that Jesus spoke, Ally, when he's stilling the storm?
Quiet, be still.
Okay. What does that sound like? Does it remind you of anything?
Children.
Or-
Children.
Oh, no dog owners here? When they start, when they start barking, and, and you just, "Quiet, sit down." And what, what does the dog do if he's-
It's not barking, it sits down.
Yeah. And what does the storm do?
It calms down.
It immediately calms down. Now, if it's just a little rain and some lightning, you'd say, "Well, it passed." But they were sure this storm was gonna keep going until the boat was swamped, but it immediately calms down. This is where things get interesting.
Yeah.
I have a parable to tell you.
You what?
I have a parable to this story, um, a personal one. We were out in our boat on a summer afternoon with both my boys. They were young. Andy was like five or six, Wade was eight or nine. Wade had been out with his dad a lot longer than Andy had been, but this afternoon, we were out way down by, I don't know, various waters. We're coming back. Of course, it's huge thunderstorm building and building, and all of a sudden, it's like, whoa, up and down, and, you know, I was trying to get going, and it was very bad. And Andy, Andy says, "We're all gonna die." It's funny, man, but he was terrified.
You bet.
And Wade said, "We're all right. Dad's got it. It's okay. We're gonna be fine." And then he calmed right down. It was just-
There you go. So, in verse forty-one, the crisis having passed, the opening words of verse forty-one, and this is also from the NIV, so it'd be exactly what Ally read. They were terrified. Now, folks, the only place where the Greek word for fear is used, the common word, phobos, is right there. So, they were, they were really worried when the storm was going on. Now, they're afraid, and why? Because, who is this that can calm a storm? Didn't they seem to do those other miracles, but suddenly he does this one, and they're beginning, uh, no, what have we gotten ourselves into? Who is this guy? And, and that's where they're afraid. And, um, in response to Jesus' calming word, in that moment, even chaos seems calm compared to Jesus' person. What a friend we have in Jesus is a perfect song. But you also need to remember that it's the same one who can calm a storm and tell it to sit down like an unruly dog. That is power, and we did not witness it with our eyes, but we have seen it with our minds, thanks to Mark. And that is why this story is the way it is. And we feel uncomfortable with different parts of it. That's okay, 'cause somewhere along the way, you need to ask, "Who is this guy that can tell a storm to sit down and shut up?" Okay, any questions about that? Then let's push on. Uh, he calls this next section "The Calming of the Past." This is a lengthy reading, so it feels like taking on twenty verses. That's a familiar story. Okay, bud.
They went across the lake near the region of the Gerasnes. When Jesus got out of the boat, a man with an evil spirit came from the tombs to beat him. This man lived in the tombs, and no one could bind him anymore, not even with a chain, for he had often been chained hand and foot, but he tore the chains apart and broke the iron on his feet. No one was strong enough to subdue him. Night and day among the tombs and in the hills, he would cry out and cut himself with stones. When he saw Jesus from a distance, he ran and fell on his knees in front of him. He shouted at the top of his voice, "What do you want with me, Jesus, son of most high God? Swear to God that you won't torture me." For Jesus had said to him, "Come out, this man, you evil spirit." Then Jesus asked him, "What is your name?" "My name is Legion," he replied, "for we are many." And he begged Jesus again and again not to send him out of the area. A large herd of pigs was feeding on the nearby hillside. The demons begged him, or begged Jesus, "Send us among the pigs and allow us to go into them." He gave them permission, and the evil spirits came out and went into the pigs. The herd, about two thousand in number, rushed down the street bank into the lake and were drowned. Those tending the pigs ran off and reported that this in town and countryside, and the people went out to see what had happened. When they came to Jesus, they saw the man who had been possessed by the legion, or by the legion of demons, sitting there, dressed and in his right mind, and they were afraid. Those who had seen it told the people what had happened to the demon-possessed man, and told about the pigs as well. Then the people began to plead for Jesus to leave their region. As Jesus was getting into the boat, the man who had been demon-possessed begged to go with him. Jesus did not listen, but said, "Go home to your family and tell them how much the Lord has done for you, and how he has had mercy on you." So, the man went away and began to tell in the capless how much Jesus had done for him, and all the people were amazed.
Okay. Again, a story that is, is fairly familiar to us. We, we've heard it before. Um, the, uh, healing of the, um, demon-possessed man, or a, a, as we probably said, the demoniac, um, i- is a, again, a, a powerful witness, is a strong witness to the power of Jesus. Um, he, he says, uh, that we need to concentrate our, uh, interpretive energy on two areas in this story. The nature of the demoniac's dilemma and the nature of the neighborhood's response. The nature of the demoniac's dilemma and the nature of the response. We have seen Jesus get in the boat, and they've arrived, maybe not exactly where they were heading, but they've arrived. Well, where did they arrive?
In the land of the Gentiles.
In the land of the Gentiles. This is not good news necessarily. Now, it may have been exactly where they were heading, but how did the Jews and the Gentiles feel about each other? They don't like each other. I've often said, uh, to get the real, to get more of a feeling for what the word "Gentile" meant to a Jewish person, just think of whatever epithet, uh, strikes your ear wrongest, and that's how they felt when they said those words. So, you know, it's not like Gentile, like I would say, uh, the walls are cream-colored, and the table is kind of gray, and the carpet's brown. It's more that clenched teeth, and, you know, that's Gentiles. You know, I, they disgust me, and they're terrible, and they have, that, you know, I don't know that they would have gone so far to s- the only good Gentile is a dead one, but, um, they didn't want to be in their presence. Where else did they arrive? It's a double whammy.
Was it a herd of two thousand pigs?
No, no, no. No, um, it's the graveyard.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
It's against the law for them to be in an area like this, because dead bodies are unclean. That's, um, a concern. Why? Because, uh, you, you try to remain in a state of spiritual cleanliness at all times, 'cause you never know when it's your last moment, and you don't want to die in a state of uncleanness. So if the, the people that had to, had to deal with dead bodies couldn't wait for the job to be over with, and they immediately went to a purification rite that took, you know, more than a few hours. It took, you know, days to make sure that if something should happen to them, and they're in a state of cleanliness. And so they, they didn't wanna be in this Gentile land. They certainly didn't wanna be in a cemetery, and they got both. Jesus holds true to his larger purpose of ruling evil. In verse eight, we learn that the instant he discerns the concentrated evil from a distance, he seizes the initiative and speaks first. And what does he say?
What happens when evil...
That's exactly right. And so he immediately is ordering the demon to come out. Does the demon immediately come out? No. He, he likes it where he's at.
Right, right.
He likes it where he's at. Now, obviously, this is a torment for this man. Flesh and bone is still flesh and bone, but he has tortured his enough to break chains and shackles, and he cuts himself. And it's all these kinds of things that would, would sound terribly painful for us, to us, but it's still not as painful as what is going on inside of the man. And so the, the command that Mark shares with us, that Jesus makes, uses the exact, because of its tensing and stuff, it's using the exact same tone as when Jesus says to the world, "When, be still!" you know? So it's, it's not a suggestion. It's a command from one who can give commands to one who must obey those commands. "The pitiful man is a mere shell inhabited by evil. As, as this shell, this monstrosity runs, bows, shouts, and pleads, the reader confusedly flaps back and forth from human to demon," excuse me, yes, "and even uncertain which is which. Jesus asks the name, and the response is, 'My name is Legion, for we are many.'" Mark wants the church inside this nightmarish, nightmarish encounter experiencing evil as Jesus experienced it face to face. Mark wants the church to be in touch with the inner character and essent, essential nature of evil, its multiplicity, disorder, and violence. To the Hebrew theological mindset, chaos was wrong. Order was right. Things that happen in an orderly fashion are godly. When things are excessively disorderly, it's demonic. Well, anybody who's running around howling at the moon and cutting himself, clothes probably shredded or naked, and had been chained, but now had broken free, that's as chaotic as it gets. This would've scared the community. He, in whatever way you would deal with a person like that, he and the neighborhood, the community, have agreed, "The graveyard's your domain. The town is our domain." Well, it's working for them. But it's not working for the man. And when Jesus views him, it's not working for Jesus. This is, again, a quote from the guy who wrote the commentary, not this book. Says, "Jesus accedes to the demons requi," well, of course, when he orders them out, they say, "Let us go into the pigs." They go into the pigs, and the pigs rush down the hill and are drowned. Now, we all, especially Christie, whose family used to be in the pork business, see this as a terrible crime, but it's not. And, and it's not because they're pigs and Jesus is a Jew. This is what Dr. Williamson writes. "Jesus accedes to the demons' request, but in doing so, he effectively sends the demons back to their place, the primeval abyss, the depths of the sea." Because they go into the pigs, and the pigs immediately run down the hillside into the water. What about water? It's chaotic. Yeah, it's the kinda place where you wouldn't necessarily find evil. But what happens to the pigs when they run into the water? They don't develop gills. They die. So, yeah, you can go to the pigs, but you're still going back to hell.
That's right.
You are still going back to hell. "As the neighborhood collects in the becomeed graveyard, they experience the same emotion as the disciples did in the becomeed sea." I believe it's at the end of verse, where am I? It's fifteen. "And they were afraid." They had worked out this uneasy alliance with the possessed man. Graveyard's yours. The city, the town is ours. You can't come here. And to them, that was okay. Now, the man's obviously in his right mind. The balance of the community's been upset. 'Cause we like perceiving people in a certain way, and when they change, it makes us nervous. I know you're saying, "Well, wait a minute. That's all about, that's all what Christianity's about, is people changing." You preached a whole sermon on that yesterday. Yes, but human beings get nervous when things change, and they're not exactly sure what's going on, 'cause you've upset the balance. And when the balance is upset, I'm afraid something bad might happen. The balance was upset, and something good happened. The man was cured.
Right.
Okay. Fear floods the neighborhood.
But, but, but I don't understand why they, they, this is my question about the whole thing. Why they told him not to, told him to leave and not, uh, because then the people began to plead with Jesus to leave their region?
That's exactly right, because they're afraid of him.
Thank you. I didn't...
But the disciples, who are afraid of him because of the storm, have already committed to sticking with him.
Okay, okay.
And, and hopefully, as the reader, this is your response as well. These people, on the other hand, are Gentiles, and they have a choice. And what they've decided is, you know, if we have to lose two thousand pigs just to save one guy, we're not sure we like that trade. So why don't you go away? Because things were just hunky-dory before you got here.
That's right.
And now you're upsetting the balance. And, and I'm telling you, we read the story a totally different way than they experienced it. We see this as a good thing for the man being healed. What they saw was you have upset the balance of our community.
His family and friends would've been happy, wouldn't they?
Sure, but they're a small group inside of a larger community. Strangely enough, this is the exact, when you think about it, this is the exact same reaction the scribes and the Pharisees and the priests have to Jesus. It's not so much that they would even be unhappy with what he was doing in helping people, but the problem is, Mr. Jesus, you're upsetting the balance around here. We've got things kinda the way we want 'em, and we don't need you
Okay.
fixing stuff.
Make it clear.
And these, this group of Gentiles, this group, that, they're, it's their city, and, and they'd just be content if he would move along, even if his family's happy and his friends are happy. The majority of them are unhappy because this is not the way things were. We've never done it this way before. You hear some of the things we say ourselves.
We say it right now in modern times.
Yeah, well, modern, all through time.
Well, true.
People are constantly, "Yeah, I just don't know. We can't accept that, that person or those people." That's just not the way things are. But Jesus came saying, "I come not to destroy the law, but to fulfill it." So what does that tell us about the way the Jews had been following the law? The, the, anybody that was trying to follow. They were following it, kinda, and not necessarily with the intent of their heart, but their hope for something in return. Okay. "We weep when we overhear the healed man pleading to ride in the boat beside the man who has healed them." Why would he do that? As you point out, he's probably got family and friends. Why doesn't he wanna return to them? Oh, it's real simple, if you think about it. Where were they when he was out in the graveyard? Now, they couldn't heal him. They really couldn't help him. They realize that. And deep down inside, he probably realizes that. But it's like Jesus and his family. He says, "Who is my mother?" "The people around me are my mother and my brothers and my sisters." This man probably now sees Jesus as the closest family he's got.
That's right.
'Cause he has healed him. Okay. Any questions about that? 'Cause we are, time marches onward. All right. Now, this next portion, in your Bible, it may be all one section, but I need to deal with it in two sections, so I'm gonna need two different readers. But before we do read it, one of the characteristics of Mark is the story within the story. And so in this instance, we're going to start a healing story, but then we stop because there's another healing that needs to take place, and then we will go back to the original healing story. So could I get somebody to read twenty-five through thirty-four? Kayla, read.
And when Jesus had crossed again in the boat to the other side, a great crowd gathered about him as he was beside the steed. Then came one of the rulers of the synagogue, Jairus by name, and seeing him, he fell at his feet. And he saw him saying, "My little daughter is at the point of death. Come and lay your hands on her so that she may be made well and live." And he went with him. And a great crowd followed him and thronged about him. And there was a woman who had had a flow of blood for twelve years and who had suffered much under many physicians, and had spent all that she'd had, it was no better, but rather worse. She had heard three stories about Jesus and came up behind him in the crowd and touched his garment. For she said, "If I touch even his garment, I should be made well." And immediately the hemorrhage ceased, and she fell on her body, and she was ill of her disease. And Jesus perceiving in himself that power had gone forth from him, immediately turned about on the crowd and said, "Who touched my garment?" And his disciples said to him, "You see the crowd pressing around you, and have you said, 'Who touched me?'" And he looked around to see who had done it. But the woman, knowing what had been done to her, came in fear and trembling and fell down before him and told him the whole truth. And he said, and she, and he said to her, "Daughter, your faith has made you well. Go in peace and be healed of your disease."
Okay. So we start this story with Jesus being approached by Jairus, who was a leader of the synagogue, which is their way of telling you he is a person of importance, a person of importance. And his daughter is sick and needs healing, so he asked Jesus to come and do that. And as, as Dr. Dibbert says, "All Jesus needs to do is hurry and get there so that she might be saved." But for Jesus, the chaos that must be dealt with is the chaos at hand. All it takes is a victim's touch to divert Jesus from the race to save Jairus' daughter. And that touch, of course, came from the woman who had a long-term flow of blood problem. Now, what did this make her besides ill? Unclean, unclean. That's on top of the fact that she's a woman. And what is her name again?
It's not mentioned.
That's because it's not, she's not important enough to have a name that's mentionable. That's an intentional choice by Mark. That is an intentional choice by Mark. Okay, so she, she has an illness that makes her unclean. She is a woman. She is, has no name. What is her financial status? Yeah, probably destitute, really. She has suffered much under many doctors, and, and nothing has, has done any good. Does she have a family?
It doesn't say.
It doesn't say. She might have at one time, because remember, women have only three roles. You're somebody's mother, you're somebody's daughter, or you're somebody's wife. There's a good chance she was somebody's wife, but if your wife's going to be permanently unclean, you probably wanna separate from her, because if she's unclean and you're around her, you're unclean. If she's had any children, they've either been taken or removed, you know, decided themselves to, to remove themselves from this situation. So she's alone in the world. She's alone in the world. But the likelihood is, at this point, she has to beg for anything that she can get. So I like the way Dr. Dibbert surmises this up. This woman, talk about the woman, this one is an untouchable in her culture's view. She is a woman. She is a nameless woman. She is a bleeding, nameless woman. She is a notorious, they would've known her in town, a notorious, bleeding, nameless woman. She is broke, notorious, bleeding, nameless woman. She has been so marginalized from within and without that she cannot even face the one she hopes that will heal her. So she has to come up from behind to touch his cloak because this outcast would never be allowed to get close to him from the front where the acceptable people in town are impeding Jesus' path. To do what? Get to Jairus' daughter and heal her. "We can be sure this human being's worth is defined entirely by her present calamity." She touches his clothes, and what happens?
She's healed.
She is immediately healed. How do we know that she was immediately healed? She says she could feel it.
Feel the energy.
Now, I, no, she could feel the healing.
Oh, okay.
Now, I don't know exactly still what that means, but I know what it meant to her, that she knew. I think she's a little surprised. She may be a lot surprised. This was kind of a hail mary move anyway, you know? She's tried all the legitimate avenues. She's suffered much under doctors. And, and this is just like a last hope, you know? This would be like going to the temp revival and hoping that the evangelist can make you walk again. But it worked.
Her faith made it.
It worked, and she knew it worked. But what else? Jesus knew it worked. I don't know if you just love the disciples' reaction? You're surrounded by people. Of course, everybody here is touching you at some point.
This is one of my favorite stories in the Bible, and she had a great amount of faith. She said, "All I need to do is touch his garment."
That's right.
So, he knows, and he could've easily thought, he could've easily thought what you just said and moved along because we've got to get to Jairus' daughter. We oughta heal her before she dies. He doesn't do that. He stops. He calls her out. She responds. Why? Why'd he do that? Why'd he do that? 'Cause the healing is not complete. All he did was heal her physical problem. When the lepers are healed, Jesus tells them to go to the priest to have it verified. Why? So that the priest can announce, "These guys aren't lepers anymore, and you can accept them back into community." In a sense, Jesus takes the role of the priest here to announce to the community that, what was that last one? "This broke, notorious, bleeding, nameless woman is not those things anymore." And that heals her socially. But what else takes place? She now knows who Jesus is. She was afraid to approach him from the front. Now, she is afraid not to recognize him publicly, or he is, yes, barely.
In verse thirty, it says, "At, at once, Jesus realized that power had gone out of him."
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So I wonder, but he really, you know, he felt it.
He did.
It was one of his father.
I agree.
What, what's the difference? What is the difference between her touch and all these other people that are crowding around in on him? You know, like the disciples say, "Everybody's touching him."
Well, she, yeah, she had the faith.
Yes. Why were they touching him?
Because of the crowd, they weren't being pressed in.
Yeah, but why would, why were they all gathered up there like that?
They were probably seeking healing.
Well, but they were also, you know, this is not a time of television and radio and newspapers, and when something happening comes down, you wanna be a part of it.
Oh, yeah.
And when somebody who's potentially famous is there, you know, well, hey, I'm glad to meet you. I've wanted to shake your hand for a long time. You know, or can I get your autograph? What are some of the? Of course, nowadays, everybody's got a cellphone. Yeah, let's get a selfie of us, you know? Uh, so I can show this or post it on Facebook or whatever. It's the same, it's not like things have changed in two thousand years. They're the same. People are the same in a lot of ways. And so, they wanted to see the happening thing. But they're just touching him because they wanna be part of the experience. She's touching him.
Those people hadn't had to believe because they saw it.
Well, but she believed. And, and, you know, I, this, this is, this is puritoria's good, but I can't claim it 'cause I've never seen it anywhere else. But this is my feeling, and this'll help in Bible study, I hope. Miracles don't create faith.
No.
Miracles confirm faith.
I know that.
And that is the case here. She had the faith enough to go and try and touch him, even if it was just a hail mary kinda thing. But it confirmed her faith. The other people there are kinda like, wow, he healed her. I wonder what else he can do? Pull a rabbit out of his hat? Card tricks? I don't know. I, I, I don't know how much they were moved because they, you have to bring something to the table. When Jesus, in another gospel, goes to his hometown and tries to heal people, what happens? Nothing.
His hometown's even nothing.
They didn't believe. There was no belief there. They were happy that he was famous, but that's Joseph's kid.
That's right.
We know him. All right, we know his sisters. All right. We've got to move along. We've got about six minutes to finish up, and we need somebody to read verses thirty-five through forty-three. Yes.
It's just that the way he addresses her as daughter, that's all.
Yes.
Important, yep.
All right, so, uh, who can read for us thirty-five through forty-three? Kristy?
Thirty-five? Okay, hold on, let me find it. "And he went, and, and when it grew late, his disciples came to him and said, 'This is a lonely place in the hour.'"
Where are you?
And while he was still speaking.
Just while Jesus was speaking.
Thirty-five, right here.
Oh, okay, hold on. I'm all.
Chapter five.
Okay, hold on. Oh, okay, I'm way ahead. Okay, wrong, okay. Thank you. "While he was still speaking, there came from the ruler's house who said, 'Your daughter is dead. Why trouble the teacher any further?'" But ignoring what they said, Jesus said to, um, the ruler of the synagogue, "Do not fear, only believe." And he allowed no one to follow him except Peter and James and John, the brother of James. "When they came to the house of the ruler of the synagogue, he saw a tu- a torment and people weeping and wailing loudly. And when he had entered, he said to them, 'Why do you make a torment and weep? The child is not dead, but sleeping.'" And they laughed at him, but he put them all outside and took the child's father and mother and those with him and went, um, in where the child was. Talking to her by the hand, he said to her,
Talitha cool.
Thank you. Which means, "Little girl, I say to you, arise." And immediately, the girl got up and walked. She was, um, twelve years of age. And they were immediately overcome with amazement. And he strictly cha- charged them that no one should know this and told them to give her something to eat.
Okay. So, like the primordial wave surging from the watery deep, these words that are delivered flood into Jairus' soul and allow all sorts of terrible things to enter his mind. "Your daughter has died. Trouble the master no more." But Jesus overhears them. His reply is simple. "Do not fear, only trust." When the disciples wake him up in the boat, they were not trusting. When the city's response to the healing of the demoniac is, "Could you please leave?", they were not trusting. To the outcast woman, Jesus affirmed, "Trusting has saved you." And so now, he says to Jairus, "Trust only." Marks, uh, for Mark, trust is the opposite. It is the antidote to fear. Human trust and divine recreation form an organic whole. Each always includes the other. Went back in the days when I was doing camp. Um, one of my friends once said, "You're the king of trust walks." Because long after those had gone out of vogue and fashion and all that, I would still always be having my sculpt- small groups doing them because, uh, to me, it can be a very powerful and moving experience. Uh, trust falls and body lifts and things like that. Uh, because I, I feel inherently, especially as we age, that, that we lose huge portions of our capacity to trust. But that's what Jesus is asking Jairus to do right now, which is ignore what everybody's telling you and let's go heal your daughter. When he says, "She's only asleep," well, we'll talk about that in a minute. But, um, he could have responded as a realist and said, "No, that's not necessary." He could have responded angrily by saying, "Well, you took too long." He does neither one of those things, and they proceed in their journey. Uh, why did Jesus only take, um, Peter, James, and John?
Trusted inner circle.
It's the inner circle, and that's gotta mean something. So maybe he didn't need anybody who wasn't a hundred percent all-in on this trust only. Uh, when they get there and the reaction of the crowd is to chuckle at his assumption that they don't know dead when they see dead, uh, what does he make the crowd do?
Leave.
Leave. And the only people that go inside in addition to the inner circle are?
Her parents.
Her parents. We, we don't need any negative, non-believing energy going on here. Uh, we, we have to have people who are, for better, lack of a better term, all-in that, you know, it's gonna be a healing. There, there's no ru- there, you know? Failure is not an option, as the saying goes. Uh, Dr. Williamson offers a tempting variation of the reading. He says, "The text intends to affirm that in the presence of Jesus and under its authority, death itself, real death, is but asleep." But however you want to view this, the point that's being made is Jesus had power over the storm. He had power over, um, demon possession. He had power over something that the greatest medical authorities of the community could do a thing about, uh, except make it worse. And now, he has power over death. We, we've all heard the term, so-and-so has the power of life and death. What does that mean? Well, uh, the king or, or the authority of the area. They have the power of life and death.
He does.
You know, they, they can spare your life, or they could put you to death.
Yeah.
Uh, now, Jesus comes along and says, "Well, death's not everything." You know, the power of life and death is meant to imply that that person has the ultimate of power. And now, Jesus is revealing, no, there's something even bigger. People don't know what to do about that. So when she comes back, when he calls her and is obviously all right, don't tell anybody. This is the first of these four stories where he says that. It may be a benediction of all of them, I don't know.
I haven't understood that part, when he tells them, "Don't tell anybody."
That's right.
Go home and tell your family.
These are four incredibly significant acts of power.
Yes.
And they, they are, they are put one right after the other to make the impact that I can see they're making on you right now. Bam, 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 bam. Who is this guy? I'm not sure if I'm comfortable or not.
Why did he say, "Don't tell anyone"?
That's right.
'Cause they would be impressed with the power without understanding the need for the faith. Just like the crowd that was around him when the woman was healed wanted to be there. They wanted to see him. They wanted to touch him. They wanted probably to hear him. But it was all show and no-go. She, on the other hand, sneaks up from behind with the, with the even slimmest of faiths. "He can heal me." Uh, that's why their touch means nothing to him. Her touch, he feels the power leave his body.
Because she's healed.
Now, how do you want to approach this one who wields so much power? Are you just there to see what might happen next? Or do you believe? That's what we're being asked. And it, it's a very short question, not even in the form of a question. It's a request. He says, "Only trust." We have to decide if we will. Any questions? We went about five minutes over. I apologize. Let's end with a prayer. "Gracious God, you have wielded great power. We have witnessed. Now let us we, let us allow you to wield that power in our lives. May we only trust and believe, and we will be healed. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen." All righty. Next time we move on, we are gonna skip over a chunk, and we'll pick up at Mark eight, twenty-two through nine, verse one. The ball this year. Yes.
I had this call. I couldn't even get out of bed at night. Had heat put on it. I mean, I mean, it was just every day, every morning. I went to the dentist to see if it was, uh, to do with my teeth. He took all the X-ray.
Good to see everybody.
So she's trying, so. The ear, I know. He said, "Miss, oh, he had it too sometimes. He'd had it with you and my eye." Of course, I had already been to my doctor.
Right.
More than I was standing in the bathroom, I get down, Lord. Now, me shat, me shat drunk in the bed and go, "Oh, in fire." He didn't not even let one hand take it off their arm.
Yeah.
"Why can't you heal me so that mine can live?" I'm scared.
Oh, wow.
I am not telling you anything. But listen, this didn't go on just to us. We kept going on for a month.
Oh, wow.
My back, I mean, my neck, I wore, I was, my family couldn't believe that this is Salala. And I wore a little patchy sleeve that, like I'm having to wear an F. I mean, it was ev- and I couldn't even get, I couldn't even see what I got. I had to do.
All righty.
That's a truth.
I'm glad I could.
I made it short because it's kind of, but it was absolutely a blessing. But he had nutty on his leg. I don't know why he waits so long.
Well, maybe that's your thorn in the flesh. Like Paul.
Oh, now Paul.
Ooh. I forgot to turn this off.